Kushi in jona, ethiopian, one of the ethiopian.
Kushi means he is an Ethiopian.
Ah, karupun artho.
It means he is dark.
Ah, one of the ethiopian.
He is an Ethiopian.
Ahna, nee inda olakathila karupaavo, alag illio, theram illio, kr, enna illio, illa illangrala irukketo. Ahna othatham urikumodey appu uruchire. Narchidi oru muri.
You might be dark in this world without any beauty or any talents but when you finish the race, you finish with good tidings.
Aka alagirukkaade.
You might not be beautiful.
Moody style, moody style arukkaade.
The hair will not be beautiful.
Othad alakaarukkaade.
The lips will not be beautiful.
Vellath tol kereyade.
There is no white skin.
Ahna idellam prachinilla.
But this is not a matter.
Inda olakathila nee enna alangolamarnalasari, othatham urikumodey viswasa pathile, narchidi oru nee urikana.
However this oddly you might be found in the world when you finish the race, you finish with good tidings.
Esuva thale muriyachuriti churiti vuditthi, eerukirave makeup allam voditthi, nee thothu porathavida, inda olakathila krisuvukahe laavutti vuddi, nee karupaayirindhalav, kath manavatiairindhal pothumanaathu.
Curling your hair and fashioning yourself with all the designs of the world and feeling in this world, life there is no use if you race, finish the race with good tidings, it is sufficient.
Naan karpaayirukkaade, naan karpaayirukkaren endru enne seyathirungal, parathirungal.
Do not look at me because I am dark.
Ah, colorless, idellam prachiniyakekereyade.
Color dress and this is not a matter.
Colorless, colorless.
Colorless is not a matter.
Ah, adu oru prachiniyai illa.
This is not a matter at all.
Ammadi poodukame, alagum illai, soundariyum illa.
Our policy is, there is no form of godliness.
Kathrudee parisutha namathukumai mundavadaha.
Glory be to the holy name of the Lord.
Mudulam samuel, padineela madhigaram, padineel padinettu vasanangal vasukkala.
First Samuel chapter seventeen verses seventeen and eighteen.
Kathrudee parisutha namathukumai mundavadaha.
Glory be to the holy name of the Lord.
Isai thandu dey kumaranaaki thavi denokki, sila karangal chollukkadaha, namipodukke vasukke keta.
We read of certain things which Jesse the father says unto son David.
Isai nooraya pilligalil, oru silar ranuothale pani purindharka.
The sons of David, some of them were in the military.
Oru silar veettila eyrendharka.
Some of them were at home.
Oru silar, aadugalai metukundhrendharka.
Some of them were grazing the sheep.
Anda tagapann, overurukum overu veelile, avralai amarti vaitthirundhan.
That father placed each of them in different positions.
Isravelile, oru yuttam nadekkakurie, oru suunnalai undayirundhadu.
There was a time in Israel when there was a war.
Saul raja vagaerindhan.
Saul was the king.
Phylisthenes were seeking that they might war with him. Soonnali, iranduverukkum adugulamana porathu, iranduverum yuttam seyya ayathamaanarka, phylisthenesum Isravela.
When situations came to be compromising to each other, Philistines and the children of Israel began to war.
Anal, saulodu rindudana janangal kule, oru byamum thikulum marindhirundhadu.
But the people who were standing along with Saul, there was fear and trembling.
Yuttan erathle, oru raachesa paravi vande, sila karangalai pesa aramithaan.
A giant came before them at the time of war and began to speak.
Navakellaarka adu terindhadaana oru karaya.
This is what all of us know.
Avan chonnai, oru chinnakariyavan chonnai, yen ratthamsindhavendam, oru oburu orutthurukko orutthar morikolallam.
Why should we shed blood? Let us go with one against the other, he said.
Neekita malai soluvaanga, ilavutta tamnada soluvaanga, erukku porushanda porunno, otteke otteke morikolann soluvaanga.
In Tamil Nadu, they will say, why should we fight like this? Let us go one against the other.
Idhey karayate avanun cholla aramithaan.
He also said like this.
Ongel orale kottikunduvarungal, naan nekkire, yenne avargal jayuthu vutthal, naangal allarum adibai, naan avani jayuthal, ningal allarum adibai.
And choose one man from among you, let him fight with me, and if he is able to overcome me, then we will all be yours, but if we prevail, then you will all be ours.
Ippri naangu naankal avaninda savaludavan, inda janangal ketta oru nee bayindhu odipayudavara.
Like this, every day he used to come and ask, command to the people, and the people get afraid and they will go away.
Abishayam betta saul, thandu dey walkile sila tholvigeal vandabidinale, inda sathruva eduthinikka thrani illamal, avan aranmanile kaathukundhrendhan.
Since this anointed Saul, who was having no capability to stand against this giant, he was staying in his palace.
Inda yuttuthukum unbaavave, avanukulai asutthavi porada aramithivutthade.
Even before this war, the evil spirit began to trouble him.
Onna samuel, padinara padinallai, namidhe padikamuriyam.
In first Samuel sixteen sixteen, we can read about this.
Anghey, avanukulai, andhaavi nooraya thakkadal, padinara padinangala, namidhe parkamuriyam.
In sixteen fourteen, we can see this.
Anabidinale, avan yuttakalathukku varamele, oringi payivutthan.
Therefore, he did not come to the war field, he went away.
Avan anghey irundu konde, yaravu payjaythal, naan ninu dey magalai vivahum seyyitu kurukkren endru, avan pesikundhairundhan.
Staying there, he said that if anyone will go and overcome him, then I will get my daughter married to him.
Naankal boykundhairindhabidinal, Isai, thandu dey kumarani kurithudana oru kavale eyarpattu, avargal epri irukkaragal endu parkamuriyaga, thandu dey elayakumarani, avan anuppa arambikiran.
As days went by, Jesse was careful about his sons and was worried about them and sent his younger son unto them.
Isai, than kumaranaaki thavi denokki, naan unney unde sagorathukka anuppuhrain, nee un sagorathil othamai pay, ivagale kuduthu, avral epri irukkaragal endu parthu, adayalathai vangi kunduva, endu chonnan.
And Jesse said, and today, what is, son, take now therefore for thy brethren all these, and run to the camp, and take a pledge of them and come back.
Inde bible shadi vande, nee othamai po, adayalathai vangiwa.
Today's Bible study is, run to the camp and take the pledge.
Idhada namuraya, indaya vedabharathunudaya talayppa.
This is the topic of our Bible study today.
Nee othamai po vendam, anal thirimbi varumbodu, adayalathodu varavendam.
You should run to the camp and take the pledge on the return.
Padineel avasanathile kadaesile, nee othamai po endu chollukkaran, padinettu avasanakadaesile, adayalathai vangi kunduva endu chollukkaran.
In verse seventeen, the last portion, he is asking to run to the camp, and verse eighteen, the last portion, he says, take the pledge.
Inde viswasa walkai, oru othapayanam, othapandayam.
This life of faith is a race.
Ah, inda othapandhitale, pallar odukkaaragal, pallar odi vittaragal, pallar odi, odikundhurukrom, innu oru periyal thral kootam, oda arambikum.
In this race, many of them have run the race, many of them have finished the race, many of us are still running to it.
Anegar odi irukkaragal, avargal epri odi narendhu, avaralkum devanakkum teriyam.
Many of them have run the race, there be they have run only they and God knows.
Anal inda otham uriyum porudhu, nee adayalathai vangi kundu, anghey poynikavendam.
But at the end of the race, we should get a sign and go stand.
Adavudhu, ivan kondubonaana, andha balkatti galvarutha payirilla, avunka karchida, avga soomaarkanglan, patthite, am, pettukonden, enkara kayaluthu vangi kundu, nisine umma, avga solunna, naanga pettukondomne, adavangi kuddi, ivaveedu pay, tagapandakudutha, tagapunukku oru nimmati, namu pay paakadaaloo, payyam pay pathirkam, pollingalan allaarkanga.
If he go and hand over the parched corn and the ten cheeses to the brethren, and take a sign from them, and bring back to his father, then the father will be having a relaxation, that his, their children's sons are fine.
Nammyinku dey, thad, namuraya devan, oru nokkathodinda bhoomile anuppi irukkarar.
Even God, the father, has sent us with a purpose to the earth.
Inda othathai, namipodu odukram.
How are we running this race?
Poruvali iduvaray epri odi irukrom endhu niraanitha parthal, namuraya othathilulla korivaduklay, nam sari seyyukkula iyalum.
Maybe if we examine ourselves, just how far we have run this race thus far, then we can rectify our lives.
Appri korivadukal namukke tenbadavital, mattavurul odukra othathilulla, andha neravi parkumporudhu, namuraya korave, nam kandukkula muriyam.
If you are not able to find a shortcoming in our race, then if we see the race that others are running, we can rectify, we can see the shortcomings in us.
Nan thirumun chollukkaren.
Again repeat.
Mattavurukkudee neravi parkumporudhu, namuraya korivu terimetavara, mattavurukke korivu parkumporudhu, nam neravulurukku pola, yamathupattu payivutavom.
When we see the fullness of the others, then we will find the people who are shortcoming, but if we find the people who are shortcoming, then we will find that with fullness.
Oru van sathrua irindhal, kuda, avanathululla nalakarangalai, kanlakarangalai, nam kattukkula vendida avasyam.
Even if one be our enemy, it is needful for us to learn good things out of him.
Avundhi theramigalai, nam kattukkula vendida avasyam.
We should learn his talents.
Ah, avundhi theramigalai, nam kattukkula porudhu, namukke, adu samayathukku oru visayam.
When we learn of his talents in times to come, it will help us.
Ah, ingey nam parkumporudhu, idhu oru otham.
When we consider here, this is a race.
Inda karayathu cholla, othamai po.
And he is telling, run to the camp.
Chikramahoppo.
Go fast.
Ah, nee thirimbi varano, anal adayalathodu thirimbi varano.
You should come back, but you should take a pledge from them.
Nee enudaya pillaidhan.
You are my son.
Ah, nee abishayam betta vandhan.
You are anointed.
Singaththi merkkundavan than.
You have overcome the lion.
Ah, karadiyae merkkundavan than.
You have overcome the bear.
Alakaka swaramatalavasiyekurivandan.
And you are able to play on the harp.
Aadugalai porupai kaathukolukkaran vandhan.
You are able to keep the sheep properly.
Tagapunukke vaathike kilkpadiyaran vandhan.
And you are obeying to the father's voice.
Ippri palavidamana qualification, ongel, namakkum, avanakkum irukkalam irundhadu.
Like this, he and we could have such qualifications.
Anal, tagapunipodu chollurudhu enna, nee po, othamai po, anal, adayalathavangi thua.
But now the father is asking him to run and take the pledge.
Idhu daan tagapunukkaya vaanchai.
This is the desire of the father.
Nee porudu mukkiyamalla, adayalathodu thirimbi varano.
Your running to the camp is not important, but you should take the pledge.
Anegar odukkaaragal, anal, oru vandhan, parisai pettukkulukran.
Many of them are running the race, but only one takes the prize.
Ah, inda otham than, avanukke walkinu dey tanning points.
It is this race that became a turning point in his life.
Palladangalka avandu dey walkile payirukran, the wayidukullaga.
He has gone to many places within that age.
Andha kurikappatta wayidukulla, palladangalka avan payirukran.
Within that age, he has gone to different places.
Indha edathukku ponam badingala, ingedaavandu dey walkai, thiruppumunayaakamariyavata.
But his running to this place became a turning point of his life.
Angherindha avandu dey walkai payanam uttilamaga, adukparaga aadumekkaran, the tolil avanukillaa, aduthandha abishayakathunudaya kattupakleye sailbada aramithaan.
It is from this race that his total life has changed, and from then, he did not good grace the sheep, he let his life not turn, not amounting.
Aduvarika avanukke vedu, aadumekkara, indha renthu daan avanukirundhadu.
Until then, his house and grazing of sheep was there in him.
Avanukke varangimme teriyadu, appri yenge, poona oru nee vandruva.
He does not know anything else, if he goes likewise, he will come back.
Anal, ipodhu, avandu dey walki ivay, kathar thirupuyudhara.
But now the Lord is turning his life.
Tagapun mulamahave thirupukara.
He is turning it through the father.
Alala, enna pathile poonaaloo, devan namin arathakaradu, madhala, ningal viswashikana.
Because, and therefore, at any path we go through, we should believe that firstly God is leading us.
Appri avan viswasaithu, tagapunukke vaathke kilkpadiyendu, appriyay purappattu poona.
When he thus believed, he believed in the father and obeying to his words, and went like that.
Adu avanu dey walki ivay, puratti pottavutthade.
And that turned over his life.
Aadumaythavanai singasana thuke, uriyavanaga, adu machivutthade.
He was grazing sheep, he made him part of the throne.
Ah, adiyamam, muppati yala madhigarathal nam parkumporudhu.
When we read in Genesis chapter thirty six.
Josephin walkaiyum, tagapun anuppinasoonnaliyedhan, walkai, thiruppumunayaakamariinadu.
Even in the life of Joseph, the situation that his father is sending him is a turning point in his life.
Ah, adiyamam, muppati yala padimunla parkumporudhu, tagapun avanikubutte, naan unney avralathukka sagorathulai anuppa pogrein va, endran.
In Genesis chapter thirty seven verse thirteen, we see that the father is calling him and saying, that I will send thee unto the brethren, come.
Oru nee avan chonnai, naan pogrein.
And immediately, he said, I will go.
Ingeyum, tagapun, avanukke, adiga paasamurindhalo, devasithath enra pogidi varumbodu, paasathu odikivittu, avanay anuppuhurukran.
Here too, the father is a lot of love for him, but when it comes to the will of God, he puts aside this love and sends into the will.
Adiyamam, muppati yala madhigaram, monavasanathile, avan kumarad, ellariyilum, avanay adigamai nesithaan.
In Genesis chapter thirty seven verse three, we see above all his children, he loved him all.
Kathar namineesikkaradu unmai.
It is true that the Lord is loving us.
Anal, adhayen erathle, namulamai, tumdiesithathan neravetthavendu endhu, vanchikkaradu unmai.
But at the same time, through verse, he wants to do the will of, will through us.
Avurudaya anbu, avurudaya sitham, endu parkumporudhu, devan, thandu dey sithathukutha adigamaha edangurukkara.
When we see his love and the will of God, God gives more importance to his will.
Ah, tumdiesitham endhu varumbodu, anbu odikivaituthu, tumdiesithathesigara karangaladhan, thiviramaga, devan irangukkara.
When it comes to his will, he puts aside this love and is more concerned about the will.
Pida, thandu dey kumarani, pirindhu irundhadu kereyadu.
The father has never departed from his son.
Anal, devasitham endhu vandabodhu, avare siluvayile arayamuriyaga, andha paaduklin pathike, appriyay opuudhu, opuivuthu vudukkara.
But when it comes to the will of God, the father, he didn't self to be crucified and go in the path of suffering.
Anbu vada, tumdiesithathukuthu, sithathesailbudhavendu endhu, devan migavum gavanamai irukkara.
More than his will, the Lord is much concerned about fulfilling the will of God.
Ingey nam parkumporudhu, naan unney avralathak anuppuhrain endru, Josephin tagapun anuppinabodhu, avan poonaan, avan walkai payanam, peru pathike thirupappattu vutthade.
Here, when the father of Joseph sent him, saying that I will send you to my dear brethren, his lifestyle also changed.
Angheyum avanukke cholla patta vaarteyenadrima.
They do the words spoken to him.
Neepoy undey sagodharuday seyamam epri endru par.
You go and see the well-being of your brethren.
Aadugal epri irukkarandhu par.
See how the flocks are.
Yenakkum marusayidi kunduva.
And bring me back again.
Ah, adiyamam, muppati yala padinallu maktavas.
Genesis thirty seven verse fourteen.
Appalu devan, neepoy, un sagodharuday seyamam epri endrum, aadugal epri irukkaran endru parthu, yenakkum marusayidi kunduva endru avanukke soli. Badigala, nee aadugal epri irukkundhu patthite, onga sagodharul epri irukkan patthite, nee enseeno, neenakondorunna yenake, marusayidi yenakkukunduva.
You see how your brethren are and how the flocks are and bring me back again.
Ah, idhada devanudaya thittam.
This is the plan of God.
Tagapunudaya thittamla idhada, nee po, par, epri irukkangalam patthite, sugasayidila visarichitti, yenakkum marusayidi kunduva.
The father's plan is this, that go and ask the welfare of your brethren and bring me back again.
Ah, Isai athiruktharisenapustavam.
In the prophetical book of Isaiah.
Ah, ingey, yaray naan anuppuven endru, kathare oru kailvi kattukkara.
Here, the Lord is asking us to whom shall I send.
Yaray naan anuppuven.
Whom shall I send?
Idha aandavutthilindhu vandhadaana oru sattam.
This is the voice which came out from God.
Ah, Isaiya, aramadhigarathe nam parkumporudhu.
Genesis, Isaiah chapter six.
Ah, yattavasanathile.
Verse eight.
Yaray naan anuppuven.
Whom shall I send?
Yar namadu karayamai povan.
Whom will go for us?
Adukkenan idho adiyain irukkaren, enne anuppu mendu chonnain.
Then said I, he or am send me.
Ah, ingeyum pida, ivare anippitthi, oru adayalathodu than thirimbi varacholrara, adhna adayalana, siluvay maranam.
Here, to the father, sin siman comes and backs with a sign, that is the death of cross.
Avudde adayalam enna?
What is a sign?
Avudde perapukku oru adayalam kurukappattade.
There was a sign given to his birth.
Avudde perapukke oru adayalam kurukappattade.
There was a sign given to his birth.
Adu enne perapukka adayala?
What was that sign?
Isaiya, yala madhigaram, padinanga avasanathile parkumporudhu.
Isaiah chapter seven verse fourteen.
Aandavaramay, ungalukku oru adayalathai koduppar, oru kannikey karpavadiyaki, oru kulandhey peruvaal.
The Lord himself shall give you a sign, behold, a virgin shall conceive and bear a son.
Avudde peraple, oru adayalam ganappattade.
There was a sign in his birth.
Ipavu thirimbi varano.
Now he should come back.
Ah, ipavu thandu dey devanudaya, sithathan neravetthamal thirimbi vandhal, adu adayalam alla.
Now, without fulfilling the will of God, if he should come back, it is not a sign.
Esu arpudangalai chedhar.
Jesus did miracles.
Adayalangalai chedhar.
He diminished signs.
Prisasakalai thurathinara.
He casted demons.
Marithore eduppinara.
And he resurrected the dead.
Ah, periyaperiyay karangalallam chedhar.
He did great and great things.
Adu esu chedhar, arpudangal namukke, kanakkile adangada.
The miracles which Jesus did is not in our measure.
Vedhathile cholla pottudhum kuda, korivana sambavungal maatharame.
The incidents which are cited in the word of God are all very few.
Avar chedhar, arpudangalai elininal, inda olakum kolladu endru, oru manidanth chollukkara.
One man of God says that if the miracles which he has done is written, in this world cannot suffice.
Andha alavu, avarathilindhu, arpudangal purappattukondhey irundhadu.
To that extent, the miracles proceeded from him.
Over naal, avar chedharallam arpudanda.
Every day, what he did was a miracle.
Andha arpudangalai kanakkile adangada arpudangal.
That miracles were without number.
Anal, idellam oru mukkiyamana karayamagave illa.
But these were not all important.
Vedam enna chollukkaraade.
What does the word of God say?
Ah, avar, kadesisin erathle, indha pathram, ningakkudumanal, ningittumendu chollukkara.
In his last moments, he says, if this cup is able to depart, let it depart.
Ah, anal, andha karayathle, devan anumritkevillai.
But God did not admit in this manner.
Ah, andha karayathle, devasithathak, devan kandipaagun indrukundhrendharka.
It was in this place where the God was very strict concerning.
Agilum, ummede sithathinbadi, aagakkaravudhu, neevraya choyya, avsolavaitaar.
And again, he said, it, I will be done.
Ipavu adayalathodu than av thirimbi poona.
Now he has to go back with the sign.
Ratthamsindhinavara, adhle, marithu, uyiroodi elindhu, avar, adhada adayala, thirumbo pay kumarana, kumaran, paladu barsathil pay ukkaraavendam.
Being shed his blood, and he is died, and he resurrected, and went and sat in the right hand of God, that is a sign.
Ah, evlo, indha pustavuttila lirada, ethniyavu arpudangalai chedhar, adhalam mukkiyamalla, thirimbi pohumporudhu, uyirtalanda varai, poisyaravendam.
He did innumerable miracles, which are not written in this book, but when he returns with the sign that he is resurrected, he should go.
Marithuthu kuda mukkiyamalla.
Not sufficient, he is dead.
Ratthamsindhinathu kuda mukkiyamalla.
Not sufficient, he shed his blood.
Avar uyirtalavittal, enkudee prasangam, virudha endu, paul pesukkara.
Saint Paul preaches saying, that if he is not resurrected, our preaching is in vain.
Ah, uyirtalanda, pidaavin, valadu barsathil pay ukkaramuriyam.
Only if he is resurrected, he can go sit on the right hand of the father.
Avan thandu dey kumaranukku oru adayalathai pettukundu than varachonna.
Then even his son also, he asked to get a sign and come.
Ah, Yakobu thandu dey kumaranukke chollukkaran, neepoy marusayidi kunduva.
Jacob told to his son to bring back good news.
Isai thandu dey kumaranukke chollukkaran, nee othamai po, adayalathai vangi kunduva.
Jesse told to his son to go run speedily and bring back the pledge.
Namudhey otham uriyum porudhu, namudhey kaila adayalam irukkuma.
But we finish our race, will there be a sign in our hand?
Namudhey othami epri irukkara.
How was our race?
Adu nam, indhanankal, le sindhikavendide avasyam.
That it is needful for us to think about it.
Avargal sooma irukkaragala.
Are they fine?
Avargal seymamai irukkaragala.
Are they keeping well?
Aadugal epri irukkara.
How are the flocks?
Neengathirimbi pay enseoluvige.
What will he go back and say?
Avandu dey aadugalipatti neengatholuvige.
What will he say about the flocks?
Avandu kuda irukkaramla patti enseoluvige.
What will he say about the ones with you?
Oru purushan pay, ma, male pay sarukkaran, vettukolungala.
He say, for example, one husband is going and reaching.
Anghey enseoluvara.
What will he go and say?
Naan indavala ka walkile samagana ma irundhen.
I had been peaceful in my life all these days.
Naanum yenakkukudutha manivim, enkudee pilligalum, naangal sabaila, seyonile, arpudangalaku, adayalangalaku, irundho, endu chonnala, avan keengay, irangakka, ulle irangakka.
If he should say that I am the wife and my children given to me are signs and wonders and Zion, only then will he get his place in heaven.
Amatavadi, anghey irangakkarukku, vaipukal korivu.
And otherwise, there are very few chances for getting opportunity.
Namukke devan ediruva irukkaradu enna, nee inda olakathli, enna seyyo, thirimbi pohumporudhu, onkaila adayalang irukkavendam.
All what the Lord expects from us is, whatever you are doing on this earth, you should have a sign when you go back.
Saadarama, oru owner thandu dey veelyaltta, oru vanathukuduthu, oru alathukuduthu vandha kuda, kuduthu yedamayidavamma, huh, sign mayidavamma.
Ordinarily, if an owner is giving something, you should go give it and get the sign and come, he will say.
Receipt, mayidavam, cholva.
He is asking to get back the receipt.
Nee anghey poonaadukken, enna adayala, nkaapa.
He will ask us to, what is the sign of you going there?
Ah, nammasavile kuda kilkpadiyada, sala pilligalirpa.
Even in our church, there will be disobedient children.
Avakoyilukka than poonaan cholva.
They will say that I have gone only there.
Ponraya amma paakapanga, enne enna prasangam, abidam.
Then the parents will ask us to, what message was today?
Sudharicham, varavaliyala yattak kettuvarva.
If he is very alert, they will ask the people on the way itself.
Oru silar, appri illa, adu, naan poona, appri, enjavunnu cholva, ena pooga, anala samalikara.
Some children are not so, because he will manage the situation that he is not gone.
Navma, inda olakathli, devan namie anuppi irukkarar, namukke oru time iruk.
We have been sent by God and we have a due time.
Indha timekulla, namem ennalamo chaila, anal thirimbi pohumporudhu, adayalallam anisekuraade, potha, kuraadu.
Within this time, we can do anything, but when we go back, we should not go back without a sign.
Nehemiaavin visuyathle, andha raja kattukkara, naan unney anuppran, om prayana evlalalago, evlalalene thirimbi varava, adeshollungara.
In the matter concerning Nehemia, the king says, I will send you, but you say as to how long will it take for your journey, when will you return?
Naan unney anuppran.
I am sending you.
Nehemia, randa madhigara, aravasanathile parkumporudhu.
Nehemia, chapter two verse six.
Ah, raja enney parthu, om prayanam, ettenenal sellam.
The king looking unto me, asked me as to how long will be that journey?
Nee ipodhu thirimbi varuvaai.
When will thou return?
Ah, kushina paranga, nee, om walkai payanay evlalal poho, nee eppe anta thirimbi varuvaan, kathar kattukkara, namutthakattan enseoluvav.
God is asking us as to how long will your life's journey be, and when will you come back to me, if the Lord asks us, what will we say?
Omudhey walkai, jayamai murikay, nee evlalal kudutha, murichiruvan ketta, ningay, ettanal soluvige.
If the Lord asks you as to how many days shall I grant you, that you might really live your life victoriously, what, how many days will you say?
Enadu esithathinbadi, nee parivurnama sengi, nee, indha bhoomile, unakkutirindha sathiyathinbadi, valandhu, nee jayathodu murichthi anta varuvaan chonna, unakketanalal vandhuketta, ningetanasangapige.
According to my will, if you victoriously finish your race and come back to me, if he asks us to how many years you need, how many years will you ask?
Chollungala, bible shadi jana.
This is Bible study.
Nee evlalal kudutha, ningay, oru parisuthavana mariyurige.
How many days will it be given to you, that you might become a saint?
Onnu vandha, enne keshathukittapodhu, abidingeringala.
Are you saying, I don't want anything if he gathers me to serve?
Sathukittural alavula, oruvarum seyrakkuada, oliyil vasamunukka devantu pay cherunna, namu oru oliyam marana, than pay enseemuriyav? Shara, muriyav.
If we have to go reach the Lord, who is with us, who is in light, only if we become light, we can go join him.
Avarathil, evlalavenu, irul, illa.
There is no darkness in him at all.
Shara, naan, enneyaantinna, irul illa, abidin chodiringala, thand sagodharunne pagai kara, van, oliyil naddakkaran endu chonnala, avan irulakradakkaran, irulil kradakkaran.
Do you say that you have no darkness? He who hates his brother is how much, he says, he is in light, he is in darkness.
Jerusalemukku poiituvaradukke, nee po, andha karangalas, success pantin, thirimbi varadukke, evlalal aakun ketta, avan oru nee cholla, yenake, arunatiyuruthinala, arunatiyuruvaado, edo oru naal cholla, evlalal aakun cholla.
When the king asked him, master, how many days will it take for you to go to Jerusalem, rectify and come back, he is saying that he will, if he is given six hundred and twenty days, it is possible.
Evlavu kaalam sellamendu, naan rajaavukku chonnain.
He told the king as to so many days will take.
Appalu, enna, ya, anuppa, avarkisithamai thae.
Then he delighted to send him.
Ongel ettanavarsa vena.
How many years you need?
Enno renduvarsha, than settle paniyurigala ellame.
Another two years, will you set everything right?
Oru manishana settle panna choli, ha, Isaiya, muppati yala madhigarathal chonnai, oh, nu kandhala, timee solamatintaa, katharila, aandavara, pathu, paninjosham kurukkara.
In Isaiah chapter thirty eight, turn to man, he asked him, master, how many days will you want to set your life in order, then he, the Lord himself gave him fifteen years.
Avar nanachari, ivan periyaraja, periyaperiyasadanachindhirukkara, orenallu settle paniyiravan cholitthi, nee chikramavu, ivutkarayathu, orungubuduthu, nee palakkamatai, marithu povaan cholivutthade.
The Lord thought that he being a great king, he will sit right at his house, even in one day, he sits at then house in order, for thou shalt die not live.
Esakiya oru nalamanshay.
Esakiya was good man.
Anal, kadaesin erathle, kujnakkolapavadiyam arana.
But in his last days, he became a man of confusion.
Ah, ningavandu, sarathrathapadcham, unkukke teriyam.
If you read this history, you can learn it.
Madhulla kooptrindha, oru nee poiitrapa.
If, when he was called, he would have gone immediately.
Madhulla, avanukke, allamay success.
Everything was successful in his life.
Allal, yelpuvalarindha kalangal.
That was a time when he was fully successful.
Ah, ellam poiitrukma, appo kooptrindha cholirpa, ipavandharan cholirpa.
When he was called at that time, if he was called, he would say he would come.
Ah, anal, last, kujnallu, avan vandhutthadu vararamcha.
But in the last few days, he began to stumble.
Adeni, enalavu, thilim padikala, raja kaleem padikala.
That you can read both in chronicles, chronicles and.
Indha titlal, vandhu, nee settle pannu, nee kalamunna, unne, avanukke, settle panna muriyala.
When he asked to settle at that time, he was not able to settle it.
Ipavu poona, adayalang kudupomuriyadu.
Now, if he should go back, he cannot take the sign.
Jayathodu, othatham urichin, solamuriyadu poi.
He cannot say that he finished his race victoriously.
Ongel evlalal vena.
How many days will it take for you?
Oru varsanakudutha, naan successairavindhavada, solringala.
Are you saying after a year, I will be successful?
Needi thavali, naan kettukundhrekrain.
I am asking God for long days.
Evlalal.
How many days?
Huh? Nourvaysa.
Is it hundred years?
Evlalakalan, ungal, avan kettavunne cholta, yenakkum evlal time kurugana, naan vandharan, karakthavandharan.
When he was asked, he immediately said, you give me so many days, and he will come back in it.
Esuukku oru kurikappatta kaalam kurukappattade.
Jesus was given in a pointed time.
Sariyavana erathle, andha karayathu, murichthi, karakthi, titlal pottade.
At the point time, he fulfilled everything and returned back.
Avargal munda varsana, uliyansonam, munda varsana.
It was only three and a half years that they did the ministry.
Anal, kilkpadiyadunkaradu, padinettu varsan.
But obedience was eighteen years.
Abidana, naan sonnadu karakthana?
Is it correct?
Karaktha, pettavurukke kilkpadiyendu, padinettu varsan, uliyathil kilkpadiyendu, munda varsan.
He obeyed his parents for eighteen years and obeyed for ministry three and a half years.
Panirindu varsanale, avar ettedi, kandupichu, viddu kuduthu vandha, adhukke, pinbu, avar enseedirundhar, pettavurukke, kilkpadiyindirundhar.
They searched and brought him, and he was twelve years after that, he was obedient to his parents.
Adha amaydin kalangal.
That was the time of silence.
Ah, appriyay kilkpadiyindukundhey irundhar.
He was just obedient till then.
Adukke, pinbu, pidaavukke kilkpadiyara, maritthade.
After that, he began to obey his father.
Adhu munda varsan.
That was for three and a half years.
Pettavurukke kilkpadiyindadu vada, paramapidaavukke kilkpadiyindadu, avari purunarakam aachinadu.
More than to obey to his parents, he obeying to the father to three and a half years.
Priyavu, avangalakala. Padinettu varsan, pettavurukke kilkpadiyindadu vada, munaari varudham, avar paramapidaavukke kilkpadiyindaradu, adu, avari, purunathukkina. Pallavidangalile, ningal kilkpadiyindhu, ungal walkile, kilkpadiyindhu, kattukundhrekela.
You would have been obeying in all your aspects and will learnt obedience.
Anal, pidaavukke, evathuray, oru kilkpadiyindukkaramo, adu maatharame, namipurunathukkinaera, ginnuthichellum.
But how much ever we are obeying to the father alone can take us to perfection.
Yathra, om muna madhigarathal parkumporudhu.
When we read Exodus chapter three.
Anghey, mosey, kathar sandhikirara.
The Lord met Moses.
Ah, avanun kuda, avanathulim, indhe oru karayathu, than kathar chonnan.
If unto him, the Lord so said such a thing.
Naan unney, anghey, paruvanudukka anuppa pogrein.
I am going to send you to Pharaoh.
Muna madhigarapattavasanathil parkumporudhu.
Chapter three, verse ten.
Neesravail pitradha, ye, enjanathay, egithillirundha, adayathivarambadi, unney paruvan eduthi, anuppuven, va, endrar. Unney paruvanudukke, anuppuve, va, endrar.
He said, come now therefore, that I will send thee to Pharaoh.
Ingey, enlla ningay parkumporudhu, ellarame, kar, sari, sari, chonnadu, ningay parkala.
Here, everywhere we see that everyone is saying, alright.
Ah, thavi dey thandu dey tagapana anuppumode, sari poiituvaran cholta.
When David was sent by his father, he said, I will go.
Ah, Joseph anuppumporudhu, avan, naan pogrein endu chonnan.
Even when Joseph was sent, he said, I will go.
Esuva anuppumode, naan pogrein endu chonnan.
Even when Jesus was sent, he said, I will go.
Anal, moseynudhey visuyathle, kujnchadadumathangal, thavukthile, vandhuvutthade.
But in that kind of Moses, we see that there was some language came in his life before itself.
Avan cholla, padinora avasanathile, naan anghey porudukka, alathuvara, idhukkala, ena kentavidamana, tagriyangiraya, naan varamuriyadanta.
And he is telling that I am not worthy at all, I am not eloquent and so on.
Naan unney anuppinan nindukke, iduva, adayalam.
He seeing that this is the sign that I am sending you.
Neen, kathar chollar, naan unkuda iruppan, naan unakor adayalan daran.
And he is telling that I will give you a sign that I am sending you.
Aandavara adayalang kurukkara.
And God is giving a sign.
Periyamalavle, nam adayalang kudubommetavara, namakal, kathar evlva, arpudangal adayalangal chedukundhey iruppar.
Beloved, we should become a sign, because God is doing signs and wonders for us.
Indha kethneve, namuray othathai, jayamai, odi kundhrekrav.
Today, how many of us are running victories in our race?
Namuray otham, epri irukkara.
How was our race?
Naal, kichilla vasanangal, ungalukke cholrara.
I would like to say some verses to you.
Namudhey otham enbadu, nalavudhatla, odi kundhey irukvendam.
Our race should be run in a good manner.
Otham vande, slopanavey, kuraadu.
We should not slow down our race.
Indhu, vethul cholla poona, thamodikakuraadu.
And nextly, if we have to say, we should not tarri.
If the race is tarrying, then means you are going towards failures. In Exodus chapter five. The race of Sisera was tarrying. The race of his chariot was tarrying. His mother is asking as to why my son's chariot is delaying. And she began to even lament. When the chariot began to slow down itself, she understood that there is something wrong with the son. Reading in Exodus chapter five, verse twenty-eight. The mother of Sisera looked at the window. And she began to lament. Why is this chariot so long in coming? What is the reason for the wheels of his chariots which went should tarry? If our race is going to tarry, then we are going towards failures. If one should tarry, it means he is defeated. Two of them are running, if one should tarry, then it does defeat him. We should not have the sign of defeat in our race. Our race should be increased than in before times. When you see the olden days' car, it will go very slow. Have you seen it? Even now, those are existing. He will keep rotating and such cars were in faiths too. There was a car called Maurice Minor. Maurice Minor. That was a green color and you should rotate with it. Before the servants of God should come in, the driver will keep rotating with it. Now, a car like that? Now, is it so? Even when you enter, if you put a switch on the remote, the doors will be open. And being seated in the cars, there are vehicles without gear, even without gear, the vehicle is running. How much in advance they have come? Now, cars are running without control of speed at all. In a car race, it was only the big, the car was started and it was not found at all. All the others are standing somewhere behind, but he is gone. All of them were had doubting. How can he go so fast? Finally, they, it was, became a report and they checked the engine. He overcame, but asked us to why, how can you go so fast? For every vehicle, there is a CC and they went even without that CC. Finally, when they checked it. The engine of a small flight, he had set in this car. When he started the car, it went in flight's speed. In this times, see how to how our races. Is your race tarrying or the chariot also tarrying? If our race is tarrying, then it's the sign of defeat and if you go back, you are defeated and you will not win the prize. Nextly. We should not stop the race. Even he asks you to go run the race, you should not stop in anywhere. You know about the competition between the hare and the tortoise? When both of them competing went. Before the boundary, the hare stopped because the tortoise will take time for it to come. Nextly, before it could wake up, it was announced that the turtle won the victory. Like this, in your quayth race, you should not stop. Problems may come. Sickness may come. And the devil's problems may come. And there will be accusations. And you will be persecuted evenly. And they will see you not worthy. And the people who are commenting will keep comments. Now, you are running in the race. The others outside will wisdom. He will say that he will, he will never overcome. There will be a great crowd to discourage you, only a small crowd to encourage. If Pakistan is going to play in India. Not all of them who are favoring Pakistan will come to India, only a few of people will be coming and the rest of them will be Indians when they will be discouraging them. In this path, only there are people who are encouraging, a very few. But to discourage you are majority people. You should never listen to that voice. Satan has kept a great group of people to discourage. This will not happen to you. You cannot do it. They will only speak like this about you. This cannot come to you. You cannot win. Like this, they will say deep things to discourage you, at this time, you should be very strong enough. One person was placed to a place of shooting. And the fruits that was kept there was as mark. That particular fruit should be shot down. No, when he was placed there. All of them were in order. They are telling everyone. There the fruit is. The leaves are all seen there. Yes, it is seen. Only one man skipped simply. What other, do you see the leaf or not? I can see the leaf. And all of them laughed. When there are so many leaves on the tree, this man said that there is no leaf. Then they asked us to what to see. I can see only the fruit, nothing else, he said. We are all seeing around the leaves, but his aim was only the spot. You should see only the goal and not the people who are whistling and encouraging or discouraging or accusing or faulting you, you are, I should be fixed upon him. With no reason, you should stop a race. Second Kings. Chapter four. Verse twenty-four. There the shunnamites says, you run now, I pray thee, you should not hinder anywhere. Looking at her servant. You take, you run now. Until I command you, you should not stop anywhere where you run. Because the child is dead. He should be almed alive. And there is no time for him to go and inquire anybody on the roadside. In this place where we are doing the bull of the father, there is no time for us to go and ask the welfare of our relatives and stop a race. And unto her, the child's life was important. Somehow, the child should be rose risen up. At that time, that prophet should be brought to her house. Therefore, she says, slack not their riding. With no reason, you should stop with riding. Dear beloved, there will be many problems in our race, but in no situation, we should stop the race. Some of them have run well. But now, saying that such people are saying these things and accusations, they are stopping with their race. And to the Galician church, it is said that the church had run well. They will give even their eyes. They had so much of love towards them, they have kept them even as God. To that extent, they had a great hope and faith upon God. In Galatians chapter four. Verse fourteen. You received me as an angel of God even as Christ Jesus. If it is servants of God, he will even keep on his head and go. But as days went by. The problems of them increased. And flesh entered. Where the flesh comes in, there begins failures. Fleshly talks, fleshly natures and fleshly actions will automatically bring us to a stoppage. In Exodus five seventeen. Five seven. He did run well. It's a good church which run well. Even the sufferings which our people have suffered in olden times would be marvelling. But now, if you should consider, there is no comparison at all. How it will be? Many of them are like this. We have left the blessings which he had. There are a group of people who have left the first law. There are a group who have left their first works. This is the state of the Galician church. When they did run well, when they gave room to flesh, when they began to consume each and other, their race was hindered. Our race should not be a race of hindrance. You should play your life and finish your race till the end. You run well. Don't stop with your race. Taking cheese and the parched corn, if all his friends have eaten, come back and how it will be? Did he do like that? Did he do like that? When anybody asked him on the way, he just kept straight his race. You run well. He straightly ran to the military into the war field. The Lord has kept a path for us. It is in this path that we should run. It might be the only path, it might be boring to you, but you should not be worried about this because it's the path that the Lord has determined for you. And he brusht twelve one. That is run with patience, the race that is set for us. That is a race which is set for us. You have not fixed it, but the Lord had fixed it for you. It is the Lord which has kept you in that race. You should look unto him who is the author and finisher of our faith. Do not look at the relatives and run. Do not look at the servants of God and run. Not look at the believers and run. Do not go to the theatre and run. Do not go towards backsnail. Do not go run towards defeat. In the race, we should run looking unto him who is the author and finisher of our faith, we should run with patience, the race. Even if the race is tarrying, it will go waste. If the race has stopped, the race we have done, he that is gone and win. After running well, if you should change your path, it will go and win. Or otherwise, you can stay well. If you had run the race thus far and you change your path, then all the race that you have run thus far is and win. You should run in the path which the Lord has set before you. The Lord has kept every path for everyone. If you are called to be a slave, be a slave. If you are called to be free, then you be free. In whichever path, the Lord has kept for you, go joyously in it. Can you go like that? Just think and see. We are going out somewhere and when we are asked, we say we came there for a change. It is only man who is looking for a change, none of the other creations look for a change. Reading nineteen Sam. Was fine. It is said about the sun, that it is more delightful to run in its path, it is like the bright groom coming out of its changing and rejoices as a strong mentor on a race. From the time the Lord has created the sun, even until now, it has a path and without boring, it's running in its race. If we should saying that it is boring and changes race, what happened? It is rejoicing to run its race. The two, it's coming out as a bright. One thing is, it's coming as a bright groom. Nextly, it's coming as a strong man. When the hot sun would come, you see as to how bright it is. Is it saying that I have gone on this path and there is something wrong, some problem than the earth? I have crossed the cold lands. I have crossed the north pole or the south pole, it never has complaints, it's not like people like us because we will flee. He does never ask for transfer thus far. It has never said it does not want to. Every day, whether you are waking up or not, it's going in its right ways. One day alone, it stopped there for forty minutes and because God had commanded it to break down. It is delighted to run in its race. Every day, when it's setting out, it's setting out as the bright. And then the other angle, it's running as a strong man. It's not bothered that the rain has come and the clouds are covered and the, and the clouds, antic clouds have come, it's not bothered about anything because it's running because God has commanded it. In our race, we should not run without any rejoicing. We should not stop a race. You should not change the race. If you do anything like this, and then all the races and win. That is why in Philippines two fourteen. Paul is writing about his race. I have the great joy in the coming of the Christ because I have not run in my race and win. I have never grieved in my life that I have run my race and win. And I have a great joy that I have run in good. Do we have this rejoicing? And just think and see. Vincent Paul is speaking in Galatians two two.
Vincent Paul is speaking, Galician two two.
Ah, nan oodukradum, oodinadum, vinagada, badikke, endu solukkara.
That by any means, I should run and had run, not and win.
Na oodin, oodukradum, oodinadum.
That I should run or I had run.
Ettenavushana, oodnadu, ippo oodi trukkada, enakku vinagada.
That which I had run thus far and what I am running now is not and win.
Evlavu telivaavu, tanudhe oodathakurithi, nichchimulavara irukkara.
How clearly man is having a shwati concerning his race.
Anal, endusunneli, namudhe oodam, remban gavnamo arukkada.
They find any situation, our race should be very careful.
Orisalala, na, oodam, muddiyadangala.
Some of them are saying they cannot run.
Adu lotthinudhe, kootangai.
That are the group of lot.
Ah, lotthasolukkara, andha malakku oodi po.
And to lot, he said, run to the mountain.
Avan, ena sonna, andha, malakku oodi po, enala, muddiyadu.
He says, I cannot run to the mountain.
Ah, adiyavum, padthambo, padthambo, nee, bakala.
In Genesis nineteen ninety, we can read this.
Andha malakku oodi po, enala, muddiyadinta, adooda, unde life, oru priyavishvi, unda arambitha.
When he was asked to flee to the mountain, he said he cannot do so, from that there was a great feeling in his life.
Edavudusunneli, yaravudusunnavanala, edavudu oru prachanile, vyadiile, elavutal, nerukkamana, sunneligale, tangude, oodathae, yaravuduniruthi irundhal, elavutal, sloppanirundhal, maribodi, ungalde, devan neemitha padila, thirumavum, magilchiyodu ooda, indhaki, ningal, ungalay, opukudungai.
In some situation or some accusation or some false reports, if any of you have stopped with your race, have slowed down your race, today you rectify it and come back to that race.
Orunnal, tanudhe, naanke, valive pillegalodu, Philippa, yengra, tagapun, vittile, kana pathan.
One day, Philip was found with his four young children in his house.
Ah, naanke, valive pillegal, ulle, vittle, avan irunda.
He was found.
Navanu, navanu, valive pille.
He was found in the house of four virgins who were in his house.
Endananduchae?
What happened?
Tidirune, orunnal, andharu sonar, aviyanu solukkara, ni vanantra markamai po.
One day, suddenly, the spirit of God is asking him to go towards the wilderness.
Iba vanantra thukandita.
And he came to the wilderness.
Anga oru radam poidirukke.
And there was a chariot going on.
Ministerde, radam poidirukke.
And the minister was going on.
Ah, orame, ippa aviyanu solukkara, andha radathodu, poi, chendu poida.
Immediately, the spirit of God is asking to go join the chariot.
Iunne, enakku kudukla? Huh? Iunne, oru radathakuduthu, ni poi, paa, stra, fasta poi, ala, charitun, solukla, ni oodi poyisare.
He was not given a chariot and asked to go join the chariot, but he asked him to run to the chariot.
Na irukkara, unno oru kuda.
I am there with you.
Namalamari, althesol, enna, enna solirukko?
If it is told to such a person as us, what will we say?
Ena, entha solinna, enna, enna, sinnjunpa, ni, ungalde, sonna, enna, sinnjunpa?
What will I have done or what would you have done if it's told to you?
Huh? Ebdiyurukun yosiyaa?
Just imagine the situation.
Philippa, oodi poyisandukonda.
And Philip ran and joined it.
Kattar solitara.
The Lord has said.
Orayi oodam, boditaa, radathakadu, poyisandita.
He ran fast and joined the chariot.
Nam, indhanatukkali, na, namudhe oodathae, oodna, oodanu.
These days, if we are asked to run, we have to run.
Muddiyadu, solakudada.
We should not say we cannot.
Devan, unakku muddiyun, choli, viswasathodu, oni, konduvarara.
Because the Lord has trusted you, it's possible with you.
Ay, olakkelarun, edukumbode, yuvana, CEO, na, erislemma, maata muddiyav, right, okay, avan, selectmanira.
When he is taking you out of the world itself, he is saying that he can change your Zion into Jerusalem.
Ingavanditina, enala muddiyadu, enala muddiyav, enala vandha, vayavodra, ibbula, ni solithi, kodapakuda, devan, dittatthi, nishtathakicudada.
After coming here, you should not say that it is not possible with you and it cannot do it and destroy the plan of God.
Chari, ippo, adayala, thuvayitu, vangra.
Now he is asking you to get a sign.
Taavi, enga, thirimavittu, poona?
What, how did they go back?
Ah, tagapun, ketta, adayala, elitinbaranama, oru adayalan, ketta, ala, devan, avan, singhassanathle, kondu, ukkaravich, adayalamai, maatinar.
He only wanted to return back with the pledge of the father, but God had given him the sign of his throne.
Idhena, yosse, bugun, nandadu.
This is what happened to Joseph two.
Po, marusaidi, konduva, na, marusaidi, epangununa?
He asked him to bring him word back again, when did he bring back?
Marusaidi, konduvaru, moru, engar kaiva?
We will see when he brought back the news.
Paru undu, aranmanele, second posting, lakhanduka.
He was seated in the second posting of the pharaoh.
Ah, adhalan, marusaidi, na, enna?
Therefore, what is the reply?
Chumor, kayilthavintavaradu le?
Not just writing, getting a sign.
Oodathae, jayamai, bodichirukko.
You should finish the race victoriously.
Adu, na, adayalam.
That is the sign.
Ni oodamai po, modinju, varumbode, edavada va, adayala, thoduva.
You run fast and come back with a sign.
Moon adayala, thugulukkana, cholukkara.
I tell you of three signs.
Raga, bondu, tanudhe, vittikondu, anavavukartha, oru adayalam, kudungan, keta.
Rehab unto the spies who came to her house, she asked for a sign.
Ningavandu, ene, sarapadutham, atinga, ene, kaapathung, enakku, adayalam, kuduthu, poon, sona.
You give me a sign that you have come here and you will save my life.
Avan, orunne, tan, kailan, ena, edakudukkara, chavap, kairi, janalakatti, vey, idha, adayalam, kailukutubida.
Immediately, they tied out a red thread in the window and said that this is the sign.
Ah, adutha, kaiin.
Nextly, it's cane.
Tanudhe, sagavanna, konduita.
He killed his brother.
Ah, ippo, unkuk, bangaramana, saabav, vandurundrichi.
Now there was a great curse upon him.
Ippa, andhatu, poora.
Now he goes to God.
Ni, rittasaba, enala, thangam muddiyadu.
The curse which you have given is hard for me to bear.
Ene, pakkara, ni, chima, ene, konduva?
He who sees me will definitely kill me.
Avan, andharu, sonar, la, 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 ni, kolamada, na, oru adayalam, poora, ni, tapipon, sona.
Then the Lord said, no, he will not kill you because I will put a sign upon you, you will escape.
Adu pola?
Like this.
Indha olakka, maamisum, pisas, namala, merkola, muddiyadu, edukke, namala, oru, parisutav, in, adayala, aruke, adu, na, ippa, namala, enjinjirukke, kaapathikondai, eva, arukke.
That the flesh was then said, man not touch us, the Lord has given us a holy spirit, that is a sign given to us, it is preserving us.
Andha adayala, lena, seyvan, oni, unulam, akirukko.
If that sign is not upon us, then which craft would put you to not?
Andha adayala, lena, manisha, oni, uyiru, villingirukko.
If that sign is not upon you, man would have swallowed you alive.
Andha adayala, lena, pisas, oni, tuki, engi, kupelidipotupirukko.
If that sign is not on you, then Satan would have cast you into some dustbin.
Ka, andhaki, ka, enuke, oru adayalam, bodut, devan, tapuvitha.
God gave a sign from Cain and he delivered him.
Na, namukku, gudasal, adayalangala, kattar, kudukkara.
And unto us also, the Lord is giving us such a sign.
Ne, saulukku, gudu, oru adayala, garichadu, ni, poi, indhan, darathla, unakinnan, narakko, iduve, adayalam.
Even unto Saul, there was a sign given to him, you go, such and things will happen in such a place and this is a sign.
Ina, Esakyaraja, ukke, soham, gadekun, kattar, solitara.
And the Lord said unto King Esakyar, that he will be healed.
Ah, moonavunnal, ni, devaalidukbo, vansolitara.
And he said, on the third day, he will go to the temple of God.
Yuvan, doubt, vanduchchi.
And he had a doubt.
Apa, enakka, edavu, adayalam, kudunga?
Then Lord gave me some sign.
Ah, orunne, enna, adayalam, vannunna?
Immediately, he asked to, what sign he wanted?
Surian, munnalal, poonuma, pinnalal, poonuma, na?
He asked if the sun should go forward or back.
Ebdiyurukshin?
What a question it was?
Iba, aal, serious, chethupora, konditionla, kudu, remban, telivaaruka.
Now he was in a serious condition towards death and he is very clear.
Ille, ille, munukku, poona, adu, fasta, poido, enakka, enakka, enesinga, surian, nervous, konduvanga.
If the sun has gone forward, then it will go very fast, but you bring back the dial.
Ni, scientist, ni, kettinina?
If you should ask the scientist.
Ille, scientific, bookla, ni, padichipathingina?
If you read the scientific books.
Ilavda, vaanayil, ilavda, space, nanandakariyigala, ni, padichipathingina?
Or if you will read the books of concerning the space.
Ah, surian, ittunamuni, nairu, slova, irukkane, oru resultuk.
There is a result as to the sun is slowed down for so many hours.
Andre, yosuvavin, kalathle, ittunamuni, nairu, ninnadu, adutha, Esakyav, nairu, kai, forty minutes, oru, time, ninnadu.
One is in the time of Esakyar, that the sun was slowed down and the time of Esakyar, Joshua, it was slowing down.
Ah, rendu, nairu, na, adu, slovanu.
And it was these two times that it was slowed down.
Aal, zagaramari, gakara, aludukide, kari, thamudun, karakasana, munnalal, maavanna, surian, pathu, baha, thirimaviratuna.
And he was at the time to death, but when he was crying also, he said, let the sun turn back ten degrees.
Ippidi, devant, ni, evlava, adayala, vangi, vela, vangi, irukkara, adayala, vangi, parisutav, pattrukkara, adayala, vangi, kalyana, irukke, adayala, vangi, ennalam, mouni, sinnjunkara, anan, ni, oodatham, muddikumbo, honi, oru, adayala, thoda, poona, la, avar, unay, accept, ponvar.
Like this, you have got the sign from God for your job, for your marriage, for all the things which you have, you've got the sign from God, but at the time of your race, at the end of your race, you should go with the sign.
Undre.
Firstly.
Viswasathakathukonden, yengra, adayala, thoda, oru, oodatham, muddikana.
You should run, finish the race with the sign that you have kept the faith.
Rendav.
Secondly.
Aludu, aludu, indha, oodatham, muddikku, kudada, sandoshuma, oodatham, muddikana.
You should not fish the race with tears, but with joy.
Mundraav.
Thirdly.
Turchiyidu, oru, oodatham, muddikku, kudada, nachchiyidu, oru, oodatham, muddikana.
You should not end the race with evil news, but with good news.
Indha, moon, kari, illada, vachchathle, unakka, adayala, illa, ni, thootu, poona, oru, naba.
When these things are not found in you, then you have no sign, it's true, you are defeated.
Rendu, timothi, naanke, yele, parkumbele.
Second timothi, four seven.
Nallu, poratati, poratineen.
I have fought a good fight.
Oodathai, moodithai.
And I have finished my course.
Ebdiyamoodi, ta? Viswasathai, kathukondai.
I have kept the faith and finished.
Idhu, mudal, enakka, needyin, greedam, pakka, potukkara.
Henceforth, there is laid there for me a crown of righteousness.
Idhu, chethamma, besaradu le, oodathai, jayamamoodithen, yengra, nichchim, ullo, oru, mansham, cholukkara.
This is not the one who is dead speaking, but the one who has finished his race and he was having the shoes.
Mudal, adayalam.
This is the first sign.
Viswasathakathukondai.
I have kept my faith.
Idhu, illama, indha, adayala, illama, unakka, entry, kradayat.
Through this sign, there is no entry for you.
Ah, on, on, onde, oodathani, viswasathakathukkada.
At the end of your race, you should finish with faith.
Andha, first win, bandra, pathingena, automatica, kaya, enjinjua, thukirua.
He who is winning, he will automatically lift his hands.
Ani, kaya, vaitunna, avar, joliputthu, kudada, avan, ikullu, kullu, ulu, noru, vandru, kaya, vaitiru.
Nobody is asking him to lift his hands, but with the internal.
Oodathai, moodithen, unde, vaile, irundu, unde, athumav, irundu, chethamma, varumbode, adavu, enen, oru, chethamma, viswasathai, kathukondai.
When there is a voice coming from out of you saying, I have kept the faith, you are finishing victoriously.
Indha, adayala, aru, na, okay.
If you have this sign, it is all right.
Simpson, ni, padichuparanga.
When you read about Samson.
Onde, valkile, tholvi, vendudu, unmay.
It's true, he had failures in his life.
Anan, listle, enga, vandita? Enga, vandache, viswasavir, pattila, ebriyair, baddununle, entraita.
But he was entered into the list of heroes of faith.
Thothana?
He was, he had failures.
Anan, ippu, muddikumbo, edukke, muddichiruka, avdi, muddila, mulachrichi, pradista, maribodi, vandrichi, oodathai, jaythodu, moodichirukka.
But at the end of his race, you can see that his has grown up.
Manisha, ungal, barvila, ni, thootu, poona, oru, nabara, arundhalam, devanukku, munbaga, ni, jaythavana, enirka, vandham.
Although before the sight of man, you have seen to be failed, but before God, you should be victorious.
Rendavada.
Secondly.
Apposel, yiruvadu, yiruvatinaan, galaparkumbele.
Acts twenty twenty four.
Ah, inge, powle, enna, solukkara? I decide to finish my course with joy. Crying and crying, if you finish the race when my mother died, she finished her race with tears, what's the reason for it? Because I am leaving my children going. When you finish the race, you should finish with joy, saying that I am going to see the face of my Lord and not be grieved concerning your children that you are leaving them. When you should finish the race, you should say that you should not be worried about me, I am going to see my Lord and I am going to be with my Jesus and should finish your race with joy, are you going to go with cry? You should finish the race with joy. That is why he says, I am not mindful of anything. At the time when you finish the race, you should not have anything, whether your wife or your husband or your parents, children or your oxen or your cattle, none of these should come into your mind. I decide to finish my course with joy. Firstly, you should finish your race saying that I have kept my faith, secondly, you should finish the race with joy. Second Samuel chapter eighteen. Your race should finish with good news. That I have kept my consecration. That I have kept my consecration. That I have kept the fellowship of the saints. I have overcome this, the enemy. I have overcome the world. I have overcome the flesh. Such a good news should be found in you. Reading in second Samuel chapter eighteen. He is saying that if you have good news, you run. Second Samuel chapter eighteen verse twenty two, he is saying, my son, if you do not have good tidings, then what's this if you are running? And to Joab, he is asking. Then he said, Ahimaz, the son of Zadok, he said to Joab saying, you do not run because you do not have good tidings. Unto David, the watchman who was standing in the fort, he is telling, one man is coming. And the king is waiting. What's the good news? He is not able to go back to his home and sit down, he is standing in the doorstep. He is saying, being in the gate, he is asking us too, what's the news, why is he coming? Verse twenty five, when he is saying. Then the king is saying, if he be alone, there is tidings in his mouth. Then how is the king's expectation? He is expecting for good tidings to come. He sent you to this world. He saved you. He has given your family. He has given your children. He has given you a vehicle. He has given you a house. He has given you health. Every time he closed your eyes and kneeled down, he has been giving you. Now everything is given and closing your project is going to take you. And your time is going to get over. When you finish and go, what does he expect? You should say good news and when he will say, well done, faithful and good servant, you enter into the pleasure of my master. Then the king said, if he be alone, he bringeth good tidings. Another man came. And that watchman is saying. Another man is also coming, he said. And the king said, he is, in his mouth is also good tidings. Even twenty six verse we see, he bringeth tidings too. The race is going to get over and they are going to come the king. As he is running, his watchman is saying. Now two of them are drawing close. And the watchman said, there is one more who is running in the foremost, his running looks like Ahimaz, the son of Zadok. And he exactly says. Rajaave, two people are coming, and one is first hour, first hour, what is the order? Sadoqin Kumaran Agimas. And the watchman says that one man of the two is coming fast and one is like the high master, son of Zadok. And the king said, he is a good man and comes with good tidings. The king's expectation, the father's expectation is all the same, that you should finish the race with joy and you should keep the faith. He is come. And his race is over. The king came and asked, what's the news? And he said, when I was starting, there was a great tumult, but I do not know what it was. For this, did you run so far? Did we run the race before? In verse twenty nine, he says, the king is asking, is all well and as to how the situation is, he is telling, when I started, there was a great tumult, I did not know what was. The king was tensed up. You have run all the race and it's a waste. And I thought that you are a good believer. And I said that you are a good worker. And the king thought that he will have good tidings and he thought he is a good man and coming from the war field and so much a distance, he is telling that he does not know what it was and the king looking at him said, turn aside and stand there. Verse thirty, he says, turn aside and stand there. What's the use of running? All the tons are tricked you, you ran even without drinking water, what's the use of your running? Next second, he came. And Kushie had come home and said. And Kushie, although he came, he overtaken him and came, he did not care for it. Was thirty one. And the first word that he said is, tidings, my lord, the king. As soon as he came, he did not say any other word, tidings, my lord, the king. This is what the Lord expects. If we go running there and say, what shall I do, what's the use? Kushie means he is an Ethiopian. It means he is dark. He is an Ethiopian. You might be dark in this world without any beauty or any talents, but when you finish the race, you finish with good tidings. You might not be beautiful. The hair will not be beautiful. The lips will not be beautiful. There is no white skin. But this is not a matter. However, this oddly you might be found in the world, when you finish the race, you finish with good tidings. Curling your hair and fashioning yourself with all the designs of the world and feeling in this world, life, there is no use, if you finish the race with good tidings, it is sufficient. Do not look at me because I am dark. Colorless and this is not a matter. Colorless is not a matter. This is not a matter at all. Our policy is, there is no form of cleanliness. Oh, he is this man who is called good man, who is Ahimaz, who not good, good tidings. His father's name was Zadok. Zadok means man full of just. That is why when the son of Zadok is coming, he said, he is of a good family. Father was Zadok. But the old name of Zadok was Ahimaz. His son was Ahimaz. The son of Zadok was Ahimaz. It is Ahimaz who ran and without any message. Father was Zadok, who is a just person, but the son Ahimaz is the son of anger. The brother of anger. What a benign image. If you give room for anger, strife and wrath and bitterness in your life, then you will finish the race, but you will not have good tidings. Do not be a brother or a younger brother to anger. What's the use of you being a brother to anger? We are brethren to Christ. If you be a brother to anger, then your race will be over, but you will not have a message. But this Ethiopian, although he was black in color, he had no form of cleanliness, he had good message within him. You run fast. And bring back a sign. Jesus, as resurrection, in his resurrection, caught a sign and went to the right hand of God. We should also finish our race, keeping the faith and with good tidings and with. Although this is given us into the hands of God. Let us all close our eyes. The Lord is going to give us grace this time. Why is this truth given to us? If we had tarried in this race, the Lord is giving the warning. In situations, we would have stopped our race, but the Lord is asking us to warn us to run. Although so say that I want to finish my race with a sign and victoriously close your eyes and kneel down. In the race that is appointed for me, help me to run with patience. In any situation, I should not tarry. I should not stop in any situation. Leaving the path that God has determined, I should not go in another path. Like the sun, as the bright room, as a strong man, I should run perfectly in my path. Lord, when my race is over. I should finish it. I should finish with joy. When you finish the race, you should finish with good tidings. Let's all open our mouth and ask Lord, give me such a grace. He who sends the truth will send his grace too. To the percentage that truth comes to that percentage. He will give it now. When you finish the race, you should not go in any direction. Hallelujah. When you finish the race, you should not go in any direction. We should not go in any direction. At the time when you finish the race, you should not go in any direction. At the time when you finish the race, you should not go in any direction. At the time when you finish the race, you should not go in any direction. Hallelujah, 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 hallelujah. Who is the winner, the winner, the winner, the winner. The winner, the winner, the winner, the winner. Hallelujah, 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 hallelujah. Hallelujah, 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 hallelujah. Praise the Lord, praise the Lord, praise the Lord, praise the. Nella pura tum puraadi jayithi, nittiyajeevanila paathinave. Nella pura tum puraai nittiyajeevanila. Praise you God. How can we not celebrate? When you finish the race, you should not go in any direction. How can we not celebrate? How can we not celebrate? How can we not celebrate?